It's been across us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united out, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, move on to public input. Mike, because you are the one and the only may work.
I'll go fast then. This is, the city's insurance program is run through EMC, company out of Des Moines. And the municipality, Kansas municipality safety group program offers a dividend every year if the program is profitable. And I've already presented, or given a check to Larry, so it is in the account. But I wanted to make sure that everyone on council knew that the check in the amount of $12,926.46 was returned this year. So that was a 2019 payout of about 20 percent. So on behalf of the agency, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for allowing us that. And we'll do it again next year.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else forward from the input? Is there any amendments to the agenda, Greg?
No.
Anybody else have any amendments? All right, we'll move on to Mayor's report. Sorry, I'm just the acting mayor. I don't have anything to report on. But I'll call you that. If you give some, if you give something back to college, please.
Yeah, I'll put on my Bethany Board Directors hat for just one moment. I think everyone on council probably has heard the news that our current Bethany College President Phil Jones is accepting an opportunity to move back to his home state of Kentucky and assume the role of President at a college in Kentucky. I was standing to hear the news because I think we had a lot of great women going on, or we still do at Bethany College. And he was a big part of that. But I'm happy for him and his family to have the opportunity to move home and be near their family and relatives and some other reasons. They're very good for their family to come back. But I just wanted the council to know that the board director will be meeting tomorrow. We have named Dr. Beth Malk as the acting president of Bethany College until we select an interim president. It will be an interim named for duration unknown at this time. I can't get ahead of our board. But likely, I would guess, six to twelve months of an interim president. The search committee is already being informed and being solidified in their future. But key thing is, I think there's a lot of great things going on at Bethany. Enough that I think we're going to be able to continue to charge forward whether we have a full-time city president or not. I think Kansas has got a great cabinet and staff and faculty. And I'm very optimistic for the college during this one year or whatever it turns out to be. But I just wanted you, everyone, to know that we will be with Al Will Jones after this month. And but there's a lot of good things going on and we're confident you'll see great things coming out of Bethany even during the next year. I think one thing I would throw out there that during the search process, I do, I'm confident we'll have a good pool of applicants this year. Because Bethany is a lot different place today than it was four years ago. I think it will be on us, the community, to sell ourselves to the candidates as the time between now and then. I think that will be an important part of the hiring process, that a good qualified candidate will kind of want to come into a situation that's positive between the college and the community. And I think we've got six months or a year to convince the world that we have that here. So that would be my way at all. But I think there's still great things to come from Bethany, that just feel another, another chapter in the history of Bethany College. And I would like to publicly thank Will and his family for everything they've done during the last few years. Because we did, or they did accomplish a lot, for sure.
And Betty, so you have to give an update on the, I might have to try to say, the cesspool sentinels.
That's right. So I'll put on my cesspool sentinelo hat and remind everybody to attend the regular old-fashioned Fourth of July in Swenson Park on July 4th. On July 5th, we will have about 450 people assembled to do the aerial photo of hashtag living dollar 2019. We're really excited about that. It will cause a little bit of congestion at the intersection of Main and Lincoln. But please come and watch that happen at 10:00 AM. Then later, we will have Abbot Tribute Band Dancing Dream from New York City here for a fabulous concert dance in Heritage Park. Gates open at 6:00 o'clock. Tickets are still available at the door. We're thrilled with the response. Bring a chair, bring a blanket. There's a food truck there. We'll have a great time. Saturday, Stan Case, former Linsburg resident and 2017 CNN finalist hero, hero finalist, will be cooking up some barbecue. We'll start serving at 6:00 in Swenson Park. Please make your reservation by going to our website at linsburgs150th.com so we know just exactly how many we're preparing for. Or you can go to Scotts hometown foods and sign up there. After that, we relocated a fabulous firework show to the northeast end of the Bethany College sports complex. Seating, the best seating you can find, will be right behind Spooky Valley Baptist Church. Bring a blanket and a lawn chair once again. The show is put on by a former Linsburg resident and professional pyrotechnician Brent Foley. Both the barbecue and the fireworks are without charge. We will be accepting contributions, however. But come out and have a great time and wish Linsburg happy birthday.
All right, thank you. Anybody else like to speak on the mayor's report? Everybody's got a question. I really appreciate that, actually. Okay, we'll move on to July meetings. Everybody has a copy of July meetings in front of them. Greg, there are any additions, revisions to this?
Yeah, just to remind everybody, past pound of revised meeting schedule. City office will be closed for Independence Day on July 4th. Additionally, on Monday, the 8th, we have a council candidate orientation, not only for those in the final office, but anybody else that would like to attend on council. They are more than welcome to come that evening. That will be at 6:30 here in the council chamber.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll go to the consent agenda. I hear you're watching. Question to approve, their second. Second. Roxy.
Jody, yes. Cory?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
He's still. Pointless chief.
I have two volunteers for EMS service that would like to join. One is Kayden Springer and the other is Chandler Kane. It's okay. I'll just have them, if possible, approved together. It'll be all right.
Their motion?
I think the motion to appoint Chandler Kane and Kayden Springer to our EMS team.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those figures down?
Aye.
Close?
Right.
Welcome aboard.
And can I get a photo?
Absolutely.
Dylan? Just come around a little bit. Do you see him? I don't know if I can.
Right, how are we going to do this? You stay on the same one on each side.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you. Planning zoning, no report? Deal business? No business. Do business, Old Mill Consulting invoices. What you have in here is the invoice from Stephen Elliott for consulting services on the Old Mill. Was originally approved. I estimated the expenses probably to be about $5,000. Obviously, I missed the mark on that estimate. And so what we need to approve is invoice in the amount of $6,656.74. Of course, we have a commission will reimburse this for half the cost. Their motion?
I make the motion to approve the expenditure as recommended on the invoice here. I guess in the amount of one half. Is that right?
Well, we will be.
We will pay the entire amount?
We will be.
Okay.
We will be paying the entire amount.
And the reimbursement.
We will be reimbursing that.
I'd like to make the motion to approve $6,656.74 for the services and expenses of D. Stephen Elliott.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
We have the discussion.
Have we received that report yet or have I missed it?
We've received the report. It hasn't been shared yet. Waiting for the meeting. Are trying to arrange a meeting to meet with county commissioner in the joint session and present it to both groups at that time since they were arguing this. And they're also the owners of the property. I guess hopefully within the next couple of weeks. I would just ask the difference in your estimate versus actual, was there anything glaring there that we're not happy with? Or is it just took a little more time than expected or let's see? I guess the report preparation might take a little more time than I anticipated. We considered 13 different groups and over 100 different people that were involved in those meetings. And it took a little more time to compile all that information and to. Yeah, the time that makes sense.
Because none of the expenses really cut a line at all. There's a $2 tip there to the New York Air Force. So it doesn't make anything attractive. It's obviously all in the report preparation.
Do you have any comments or questions? Roxy?
Jody, yes. Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Yes.
The next item is electric vehicle recommendation. Lucas.
I am, we're glad to be here talking to you this evening about our electric car program. For the 2019 CIP, so a year ago, you all approved 42,500 for an electric car. And the reason that we've chosen to move forward on this is to showcase electric cars as a viable alternative for folks with a view to seeing wide adoption in Linsburg. And the benefit to the city, there's lots of benefits to electric cars that are better for air quality and some things like that. Specifically for the city and the city council, the interest is in seeing it adopted and seeing more electricity used, frankly. That's good for utility. That's good for the city of Linsburg, though. So the goal is to show that these are a viable alternative. And so as I set out, looking at comparing to electric cars that are available on market today, the question that I was asking was which of the available models says to somebody in the board, yeah, I think I'd like to go test Tesla. And so in my opinion, just on visuals, when you look at the three cars that would be easily available to us, if you look at a Chevy Bolt, a Nissan Leaf or Tesla Model 3, there's only one of those that makes you go, I'd like to go test right back. And that's the Tesla Model 3. I say those are the only three that are readily available. For example, it wouldn't be difficult, I'm sure, to get a Model X or a Model S. I'm looking at cars that are moderately priced. There's a whole range of electric cars out there that are luxury cars, that are quite expensive. But looking at moderately priced EVs, electric vehicles. So if you look at comparing range and Tesla Model 3 base has 240 miles of range. The Leaf has 226. When I say range, how many miles can you go on a full charge? The Chevy Bolt, those 238, those are comparable. Delivery time for the Bolt, the Model 3, the Leaf are comparable. In terms of track record, Tesla's had a commercially viable electric car since '08. The Leaf since 2011. And Chevy's only been in this game since 2017. So while, you know, if you think Tesla has kind of an upstart new car company, they are. But they're also the oldest commercially viable electric car that I'm presenting to you. One of the other big considerations is what service would look like. And on the Leaf or the Bolt, from conversations with salesmen, we would need to transport the vehicle to Wichita to get serviced. On the Tesla, Tesla would come to us. Wherever the car is, they would come to service. That's the model that they are building and have been delivering. So and of course, price. So if you're looking, these are averages because I'm sure you all have experienced the joy of buying a new car and trying to pin somebody down on a quote is kind of difficult, even if you say, no, no, I need a quote because it's the city buying process. So I've got average prices here for everything but the Tesla. The Bolt at 38.8 on an average. Nissan Leaf 40 and a half. And then the Tesla that I'm presenting to you is at $41,100. So I recommend a motion is for the city council to purchase a Tesla Model 3 base, model 240 miles of range for $41,100.
Doctor, a motion?
I'll make a motion to purchase a Tesla Model 3 base with 240 mile range here, $41,100.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion?
Great. Does that include sales tax, Lucas, since this is from the electric fund?
No, just not. Probably not.
So that would be additional expense? Thank you, Larry.
Okay, so in light of that, we have, what'd you say, 42.5 budgeted? So we have enough budgeted to cover the extra expense for sales tax?
That'll add about $4,000, close to $4,000 to the cost, correct?
Yes. Okay, so what are these are 2,000, 42.5 is what we have budgeted. Okay, so can we approve this and then when it comes in, we'll have to just approve more later?
Tell us. Well, you can amend the motion if that's all we can go. If you want to make a sale, we need it. If you have the most, no, I'll be there.
Does it work? Okay, well, we have, we do have a motion and a second on the table.
Or you can amend the motion to say plus sales tax or?
Or not to exceed $44,000?
I don't think you need to put the not to exceed as long as you're, I mean, the current sales tax rate is, as long as you can put that in the motion, I think you're okay.
Does it include plus sales tax in the motion? Okay, so I amend the motion to include that purchase of a Tesla Model 3 base with 240 mile range, $41,100 plus sales tax in addition.
Then a second, agree? Yeah, then any other further discussion?
On service, if they come here, do they come from California or where do they come from?
At this point, they'd be coming from Kansas City.
What kind of charge do they have for coming onsite to work on a car?
My understanding is that that's included.
For the life of the car for a year? How long?
That's a very good question. And I, so I won't speculate. I'll get back to you.
What, I understand, I recall in the CIP meeting, we were talking about promoting this as an alternative. How does the community benefit by our, by our driving an electric car? How do they know how forms what it's like? What would, what will make them think, I think I've got one of those?
Certainly just interacting with it is part of it. Part of, part of how I think about cars is seeing them in parking lots, right? I mean, just seeing it, somebody parked out, having it paraded and that kind of thing.
Also, as mentioned, having it in the car show in August. From the benefit of the community as a whole, the economics of the electric vehicle, the average person or the average family spends $233 a month on gas, and that's an average across Kansas. The average is about, what, $2,600, about $2,500 a year. An electric vehicle costs, and I average, about $1,000 a year in electric. So you're saving about $1,500 over gasoline powered vehicle. We plan in 2020 to bring to you incentives for both residential chargers and commercial chargers for to help or encourage adoption. Another benefit is, is as the adoption in the trend stays that the transportation system's becoming electrifying, is as it becomes more prevalent, it will help us manage the valleys and the peaks so they aren't steep, which helps maintain a cost of power. When you have steep peaks, your cost on a per kilowatt hour basis is expensive. If we can fill the valleys or flatten the peaks through load management of electric vehicles, it helps stabilize the cost of the power that we purchase wholesale. So.
I'm curious, do we know if there are any, are there any Teslas in Linsburg?
I know at least one on the parking lot exists.
Okay, I, because I can't help but think of Marcy Penner and the car they had or which had the vinyl on it promoting what that was. And I don't know what the length of the car is and I don't know, I can only imagine we're putting a vinyl, a colorful promotional vinyl that would promote Linsburg as a green city and encouraging alternative transportation. Really marketing the car rather than just buying the car and letting it sit in the parking lot and taking it to a car show once a year.
That is part of the plan is to wrap that vehicle so that it's promoting, you know, this small electric vehicle and promoting, I mean, several things, not only the electric vehicle, but having Mrs. Linsburg on. Several different things about the utility to. It's not just going to be a car that's.
Set in the parking lot.
Yes, it's going to have, it's going to be, we haven't designed that piece of it yet, but that is the plan.
Yay, I like it. I'm all for it.
Yes. Is this going to be replacing one of our current seat cars or is it going to be an addition to? It's going to be an addition to.
I'll have to get that in.
You'll get to ride in it. You guys are covered drivers under our policy.
I'll have to get that in.
Yeah.
The rest is sure that it won't be sitting in the parking lot.
I guess my question back on, my question would be, do we need that extra? Can this take the place of one of the existing cars? I want to answer yes and no. It's to be used as a marketing piece. I also see one of the things is when, instead of when doing meter readings, driving around doing meter readings, do it in this vehicle. And I say no is because, you know, we have an administration vehicle now. The last department that drives it is administration. You know, this is an electric department vehicle that would be used for purposes of promoting electric and also for administration. We were driving to our, our meetings with our fellow utility members, showing them all we have going on in our community. Would it be an added expense for a charging station? Is it going to be parked here or is it going to be parked down somewhere else to be charged? Well, I mean, there will be an expense for a charging station. But we can handle that through the energy efficiency reserve. So it's not like by an identity plug in with it, right? Well, you do with a plug in with it.
For, for home charging, we should be good to go. So it didn't matter finding that spot on safe property right now. Without a big perk.
Right.
Does cold weather affect electric cars?
It's a good question from the research that I, I don't think that would be a concern particularly here. I mean, they are solar driven, not further up here, but.
Lots of the, they're lithium ion batteries as opposed to their can. You know, remember you used to have to fully drain the battery before you could recharge it. Otherwise they had memory. Well, lithium ions are not that way. It will impact it some, but not to a great degree. I would be more enthusiastic about this if we could practically use it more so than marketing. I guess you drive it around, do meter reads, I suppose, I guess. I mean, I'll get practical use too. I mean, going to meetings, but into the bit, I, you know, from the standpoint of being a vehicle that floats around all apartments, no. That's not the intent. from the standpoint of being a vehicle that floats around all departments, no, that's not the intent.
And then since the cost, what sales tax, do you exceed the amount budgeted? Is that one of those problems, or look, all of it come out of the, uh, weapon?
Well, it'll all come out of the electric fund, um, and I know I can't remember off the top of my head. We've had some, I have to go back and look, but we've had some capital purchases that have been in the budget. We could use some of those remaining funds to cover that, that cost.
Any other questions, comments?
Are there charging stations for these that we know, like in Salina, for example?
Yes. And the, and the thing is, I mean, one of the other benefits, particularly with charging stations themselves, is you could go online and you have an electric vehicle. If it's Tesla, they'll tell you where your Tesla charging station is. If it's other vehicles, you can go online and see where charging stations are located. Tesla also has an adapter that comes with the vehicle that you can use another, uh, charging station if need be. But you, you know, and people that have electric vehicles will go online and see where charging stations are and specifically make trips to those communities as part of their travel pattern to, to charge their vehicle.
So it is a special adapter, a special connection to connect and actually charge it? So that's gonna have to be purchased in, essentially at the same time as the vehicle?
No, not, not the same time. You can charge it via house receptacle, problem is, is that. There's three levels of chargers, um, one which is basically a, essentially a house-type service, uh, it, it takes, I can't remember, it's...
It's an overnight charger?
Yeah, I mean, it's like eight or nine hours to fully charge it. There's a level two, um, charging station that cuts it, oh, like about three or four hours. Um, and then there's a level three that I can't remember.
Hour and hour and hour.
Yeah.
So it charges with, uh, one tenner bill each?
So when you take it to Salina, would it charge for that? Do you have to stop and charge?
I would, I can't, but I would also say...
I would not anticipate ever charging in Salina, right? Or if you, if we took to Pico, we might charge it for the day to Pico, and then drive back and charge it every night. Here, took out a great bend, or, you know, wherever there was a meeting, you might charge it during a meeting, but you're not gonna be, you're gonna be stopping between here and there to charge.
Hopefully, hopefully, with, with, uh, with a little bit of planning.
Got comments? Question getting way ahead of myself, I'm stretched, still adjusting my discipline. Uh, but let's say we're successful, we may get other people interested in electric cars. That will have a positive impact on rates for customers.
Well, potentially, yes. Plus, you know, we also, we start talking about incentivizing, um, residential chargers. We need to know where people are charging their cars, 'cause if you have a neighborhood full of cars, electric cars that are charging at the same time, we're gonna burn up a transformer, because they are not, transformers for residential purposes are not designed to carry that level of load. Um, and I guess I look at it this way, I understand your hesitancy, but from a business standpoint, and the electric utility is a business, our sales are flat and our costs have been increasing. You know, this is an opportunity to help capture and create a market, to help grow our load. Um, you know, we're not gonna have a, an industry that comes in like, uh, a refinery that's gonna have, create a sixty-seven percent load factor that causes your costs to be extremely low. That is unrealistic. Um, I see this as, as being on the front end of growing the market for our electric utility.
And if I may, Corey, I spent some time thinking about return on investment. If we were to spur ten, ten households to purchase an electric vehicle and they use it as a daily driver and are charging it overnight here, ten households did that, I think the electric sales alone would pay the car about five years.
That was gonna be my next question. What's the expected life expectancy of, sorry, repeat myself. What is the life expectancy of a vehicle like this?
They're seeing them go to a million miles. It's a, it's a pretty different vehicle, um, from, from what, um, you know, the, for the combustion engine that we're used to. The batteries, um, may be replaced at some point, but, um, you know, if, if, we, we should expect that, you know, at least a ten to twelve-year life, life span of it.
And then the last thing, you know, I, when you're discussing what, leveling off, leveling off, uh, our loads and could this exasperate our people all the time, if everyone were to drive their car home from work and plug it in? When they're doing their laundry, and how would we, not, not getting ahead of things, I don't know.
No, no, I mean, it's a, it's a fair question. Yes, it could, um, you know, that's, that's one of the values, um, uh, one, if we incentivize the chargers, we become a very passive. Two, looking at AMI, you can look at when the peak loads are. They have an automated metering infrastructure, which is a two-way communication system, um, with the meters, and you can look at, to really see when your loads are. And you can design a rate structure to encourage char, charging your vehicles or doing things at a later time, because, you know, if, if you have a programmable charger and you have it coming on at eleven o'clock at night, running from eleven till four in the morning, there's times that, uh, wind companies are paying people to take the power off, off the system because they have nowhere to go with it. So we could create a rate structure to incent, further incentivize, um, when they charge their vehicles.
Any other questions, comments? Say no, we have a motion in a second?
Joey, yes. Clay?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Ed?
No.
Okay, bottom one, motion passes. Thank you very much. Good comments and questions. Uh, next item we have, uh, the 2019 audit contract.
Our current officers of Adams Brown are involved, uh, they purchased the business of DeBaudel. So they have one year under, I think it's actually two years under his old contract and then two years under this new contract. It's a three-year contract that they go out with. So, um, this is the third year that I'm asking to have approved. And it's a five-hundred-dollar increase over the prior year for a total of twenty thousand dollars.
Is there a motion? Motion to accept a total of twenty thousand dollars of Adams Brown's involvement, all charge for our services for the year 2019. And is there a second? Second, discussion.
Would we find this increase in, in keeping with other services? And I know there aren't very many that, who own the city, but is, is that increase what one would expect?
A reasonable increase, yes. Anyone else? Then this will be the last, the last year of the contract, so the next year...
So next year, we're about to ask for another contract to be, uh, submitted to us for three years.
Or would you see proposals, or...
Well, we did see proposals, uh, when, when this came up, and, uh, there were three companies that we looked at, not only two of them, um, submitted proposals. And it was the same companies that had done proposals three years prior when we'd done our bid. And the other company was like a thousand dollars or, or fifteen hundred dollars more per year than what this contract was.
We, we do our, these are three years. We've done three contracts, so after next year, after our, um, next year, three years.
Again, if this is the third year of a contract, why isn't it the same price? A third year of a three-year contract?
Well, in, uh, there's a great schedule, it's, uh, after this, and the first year it's a six-hundred-dollar increase, this year a five-hundred-dollar increase.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Roxy?
Joey? Yes. Cory?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next item we have is, uh, ambulance, and, uh, that's for you very well.
Um, we need to amend the, uh, budget for the ambulance fund. Um, public safety director, uh, is retiring, um, at the, uh, end of the year. And part of the salary and, and expenses are budgeted, um, well, forty percent of the, the salary and benefits are, uh, budgeted in the ambulance fund for public safety director. And that's an additional unbudgeted expense currently of twelve thousand five hundred. But, um, this expense is offset because the, uh, run fees or service charges, um, are greater than budget and anticipated to be about forty thousand dollars higher than what was originally budgeted for the 2019 budget. Um, the budget requires hearing, um, which has to be published in the paper within ten days of the advance of the hearing. So what we're seeking tonight is, uh, a motion to hold a budget hearing on the amended 2019 ambulance fund budget and to place an amended 2019 amended fund budget on the July fifteenth, 2019 regular city council meeting agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion?
Motion to hold budget hearing on amended 2019 ambulance fund budget and to place an amended 2019 ambulance fund budget on the July fifteenth, 2019 regular city council meeting agenda.
And is there a second? Discussion?
This will appear in this week's paper to allow for the ten-day notice.
You have a discussion? Take none, follows the paper. All right, I would like to oppose. Motion passes. And then the next item we have is the elective office assumption.
Um, currently, after, uh, November general election, the newly elected, uh, council members do not take office until the second Monday of January. Um, this was, uh, by, uh, compliance with a state statute, which was adopted 2016 and impacted us in, uh, 2017. I know during that time, after that, the general election, there were a lot of comments about how awkward it is that here you have these council members that are elected that don't take office for another two months. And then for those council members that are leaving office, say it's an awkward time also because they know they're leaving office and here we are conducting business for two more months. The, the late Kansas legislature adopted Senate Bill 105, you know, provides, uh, locally, um, to determine when newly elected candidates can take, take office, um, as long as it's no sooner than December one or no later than the second Monday of January. And so this is, this is on the agenda for direction, not for formal action. Formal action would require, um, a charter ordinance, which means you charter out a state statute because it's not uniform in its application to cities or different classes. It has to pass by a two-thirds majority before it doesn't pass. And then a charter ordinance is also subject to a petition for referendum. So it has to be published two times in the official newspaper. And, uh, if there's no petition for a referendum, then it becomes effective sixty-one days after the final publication.
So right now you need a consensus from council?
Yes, I mean, rec staff, um, to draft a charter ordinance changing the days. Yes, I'm wondering, do we have council? I mean, you can, you can specify a specific day or a date of the month. You know, my recommendation would be that, I mean, we have meetings on the first and third Mondays of each month. Do you want it the first Monday of the month, the third Monday of the month, or you want it? I mean, my recommendation would be first Monday in December after the general election. I mean, essentially, that's just an end of a month difference because the federal election is first Tuesday in November of every federal election. For that November.
No, I would just miss it, lost the whole four, the seventh first. As a joke, yeah. All right, is, is any discussion on this?
Makes good sense to me.
We have consensus to, uh, rec staff to draft charter ordinance changing the days. That newly elected council persons take office to the first Monday in December after the general election?
Yes.
You have direction?
Yes.
I think we can get that out. All right, uh, any other new business?
Uh, yes, I have a couple lines. Need to schedule a budget meeting to present the proposed 2020 budget. Would be a work session, um, I've thrown out the dates, the third, ninth, tenth, and eleventh. I hope you, uh, this month, uh, for, for us to give a bulk, uh, budget publication and, uh, in a timely fashion for a regular council meeting, um, we would need to have it soon. I have the dates, I threw out an email with the third, ninth, tenth, and eleventh. I hope it's not the third because we don't have PowerPoint put together and it'll be difficult to get it done between now and then. Uh, the tenth really doesn't work because, um, the evening of the tenth is when the lieutenant governor will be here and he will be having a listening session from six to seven-thirty that evening. Um, so looking at the ninth and the eleventh, I have heard from two members already that the ninth does not work for, but the eleventh does.
So very, very nice study.
If the ninth works for everybody else, I was one that said it wouldn't work. It'd be easier to have it a different night. I mean, I, I could probably make the ninth work if that suits everybody else better.
I'd probably be, uh, more suited for the eleventh myself.
How about if you were to start?
Uh, typical, we, it would get you, feed you and get you tired, and, uh, it's probably start around six, the meeting itself.
I will actually be out of town, but since I'm a lame duck and the new budget year doesn't start until the first January, I'm sure you will not miss my questions.
Yes, you will.
Oh, thank you, yes, that's strange.
Yes, sir.
You can make the ninth work, Joey?
I could, yeah. I have one thing that I can do.
I mean, I, I can make that work.
I can make it work. Not the ninth.
Yeah, I can make it work, that might work maybe. Here's the stuff, I suppose. Yeah, that's.
That's six, you said?
Yes.
I was saying, what can I?
Back agreeable?
I can, I think I have to make that work.
How you do it far? Are you checking?
Sure.
Check later. Yeah. Or the third, whatever. Third doesn't give me enough time. We need to skip the parrot.
Just hand it to you. July ninth, six P M.
July, yeah, five thirty. Okay. All right, you have another other?
I am so excited to get one more. Thank you. Thank you all for inconveniencing and changing your schedules around. Awesome. I feel so appreciated.
Just to touch, sorry, Ken, just to touch, I actually brought it up earlier, council candidate orientation on the P A. So.
Rick, I have the, there's a, the Lady Kansas municipalities will be having an open representative of the new act session workshop on Friday, August 10th and March 10th at San Yan that I would like to see if anybody else is interested in attending.
What's it again?
On the 16th. I would be interested in that, I'll be first, so I may register.
And also the crowd meeting. The Lady Kansas municipalities conference is October.
Twelve, three forty.
Um, in Olin Park. So if you're interested in attending, please, back Roxy down.
Is that the last week?
Is it?
It's the eighth of August.
The week before.
Any others? That is all I have. Anyone else? All right, I will present a motion to the chair. I know this is usually Hastings'.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. May discussion before we turn. All right. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Be adjourned. Hey, Bill. You said on the, uh, the school resource office.